Report, 2022 Bryan City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is to approve the minutes of March 7th. I get motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Second on the agenda is a discussion regarding trash recycling bins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I've got a little slide presentation to go over the bid and what we put in the bid. And then there's some questions and answers. And then I guess when I'm done with the slideshow, I'll open it to you guys, members of the public. And we have quite a few representatives from Republic to help answer the questions and concerns. So these are just the basic bid specifications. I mean, there is 30 or 40 page bid specs. This is just the highlights. So it'll be, once a week, the garbage will be collected between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And that's the 95 gallon tote over here, once a week. And then, once a month, there is a one large item pickup, which will be on a preset day by Republic. They'll pick that day. It'll be the same day every month, but we just don't know what day that is yet. So you can set out your 95 gallon tote and one large item, like a couch, recliner, something like that. And then the recycling has a separate 95 gallon container, which is over here. And that is every other week that will be picked up. And the porch pickups or the disabled pickups that we do now will still be the same. They'll be honored by Republic. So if you can't get your trash to the curb, you fill out the paperwork and they will come to your, outside your garage door or your front door and take care of it and bring the container back up to the house. Large trash that we do now, the once a month, is going to end. And there'll be two times a year, in April and October, where the residents can bring their all trash to the street department. We'll have roll offs there for them to throw it in or a few of us will be there to, if they can't get it in the container, we'll put it in the loader and load it in the dumpster for them. And then we're looking at like a Thursday, Friday, and then Saturday morning. That way it gives everybody a chance to do it. It works first or second shift, because they'll have the opportunity to do it. And that's an unlimited amount, as long as they can prove that they're a city resident and pay for Republic services. Miss Pickups will be taken care of on the next business day. And that's written in the specs in the bid. So if, for some reason, they miss somebody's trash, it will get picked up the next day. Now, they don't have to hang on to it till the next week. The billing is done by the contractor and it may be quarterly. This is a five-year bid term with a two-year option at the end. So we have an option after five years, if we like the service and we like the rate, we can continue it for another year or two, if both parties agree. And the leaf pickup and the brush pickup will still be done by the city, the street department. There will be no recycling drop off at the recycling center anymore if this happens. But I did speak with Sean Stark today of Wilson CAC Recycling. He is going to put out a, or more than one, he'll put out hoppers like they have out in front of the recycling center now. On Toy Street, it is facility for people to haul and bring in if they have a lot of cardboard or they have something that's not going to fit in that tote for two weeks. So they'll still have the ability to drop it off. It's just at Wilson CAC, not at the recycling center. Now we're on to the questions that were brought to you guys and forwarded to me. So I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. What prompted this and why the change? Well, for years, every year, there's an increase in dumping fees, fuel fees, equipment fees that just keep going up. And we're getting to the point now that we need to change either our rate or change the service to accommodate those increases. And, you know, the labor shortage that's nationwide. We've had an opening at the street department for the garbage truck for two years now. I can't find anybody to fill that position. And over the years, it seems like the all trash, the monthly all trash has grown and grown and grown to now that it takes us two days a week to pick that up rather than the one day it used to. So that only leaves three days a week for us to do the rest of the jobs that need to get done. What about all trash? I pretty much covered that. Like I said, and it'll be at the street department inside the fence. So it'll be open from 7:00 in the morning probably till 5:00 o'clock at night. And they have to prove residency. They have to bring a copy of their bill and their address, prove who they are. That way we don't have everybody from outside the city and the county bringing stuff to the street department to get rid of. Because like, that's where a lot of the all trash, not a lot. That's where some of the all trash is coming from, is people that don't live inside the city, hauling it into their family or friend's house in the middle of the night or after dark, backing up the truck, dumping it off in the yard and taking it off. And we have to pick it up. And the residents all have to pay for it, so. What about recycling? It will be handled by the contractor in a separate 95 or 96. Is it 95 or 96? The big tote in a separate container. And again, it's picked up every other week, which, if you look at the size of that tote and the totes that we use now, you can fit 10 of the totes we use now in that container. So there shouldn't be a problem. Stick, leaves and grass in the drop off. Sticks, leaves, grass, drop off. The street department will still pick up the sticks as usual. It'll be once a month. And we'll probably keep the same, same schedule as the all trash that we do now. Will be the flims and brush pickup. And we'll pick up leaves in the fall from the curb or the terrace, just like we do now. The grass and vegetation hoppers that are out at Buffalo Road at the recycling center now will stay there for everybody to bring grass and leaves out there. What happens to the recycling staff? No final decisions have been made yet, but some of them may transfer to the street department to cover the opening that we have now and to retirements that are in the very near future. What is this going to cost? The current rate today is $25.50 per household, which we've talked about raising the rates. And in my opinion, $10 is the least that we can raise it if we continue to do what we're doing. Because we're going to have to raise the rates, the pay scale, because we can't find anybody, we can't compete with Republic that pays over $19 an hour to drive an automated truck. So the bid costs are as follows. We wrote the bid spec with a base bid of no increases in the second year and then 2.5% increase on years three, four and five. So you see those, year one starts at 2110 and year five is 2272. So that's below the $25.50 that we're paying now. And they submitted an alternate bid with a 3.5% increase each year, but it starts at 1904 and then year five is 2185. So that's over $3, $4 less than what we're paying right now without the $10, $5 or $10 increase per month. That's my last slide.
I know.
Do you have questions?
I do.
Before we even spoken that up?
I was telling Rick earlier, I've had more phone calls on this than I think I have anything else since I've been on council. First, you mentioned the rate increase. All right, right now, we have a rate for seniors. Is that going to also be in effect for Republic?
No.
No? Okay. Secondly, if you're already getting the porch pickup or you put it out in front of your garage for the seniors, you said they have to fill out paperwork. Are the ones that are already getting it going to have to go back and fill out more paperwork for Republic? Or will you just transfer that for them?
I will give them that list.
Go ahead. You might be able to answer it too.
Well, I will give them that list.
Okay, so if they already get it.
Craig said those would automatically transfer.
Do you need more paperwork than you just was?
Okay, if they already get it, then they do not have to fill out more paperwork. Okay. I also was asked, right now, you have discussed that you would have the large trash pickup twice a year. I've had a few people ask me if it could be more than twice a year, if we could do it three times a year.
The bid was, the bid was written.
The big one?
The bid was written for twice a year.
Okay.
So we don't believe we can make changes to that.
Can we change the rate?
Which, we can do that in alternate work. That side item will cover your costs if you want. And that will raise the rates.
Okay, so it probably would stay at twice a year. Okay. I also had a lady call me this afternoon and she said, when there are cars parked on both sides of her street, she said, what am I supposed to do with my trash? Because this comes up and it's all automatic. What am I supposed to do with my trash container if there's cars parked there?
First.
Please state your name.
Yes, I was going to, yes, thank you, thank you. My name is Craig Lutz. I'm the Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services. I support the Bryan, Ohio, Fort Wayne, Kokomo, Wabash and our Indianapolis markets. Very good questions and great questions to all. To kind of explain that question to you on when the carts are, cars are parked, we do ask, as cars go parked in this, right? We design those carts to be serviced in between cars. Or as, when we service, as you can see during the times that we service, we ask, you know, to be out, you know, at your businesses. So we have that opportunity to be able to pick up that cart without being impeded or blocked as possible. Now, is that, does that happen all the time or is that 100% of the time, every time they're? Absolutely not. So in those rare circumstances or in those unique circumstances, do our team members or our essential service members, our supervisor in the back, will get out of their truck and move that cart to be able to service it? We give them every chance and every opportunity to service when we can.
So it will be picked up even if they can't?
It will be picked up. Sometimes, but when the, so a lot of times, the cul-de-sacs are a big time situation as well or on mailboxes. And maybe that cart might not be in that same spot where you left it or she, or they left it. But that might be some of that trying to help promote the education. This is a better spot, have you considered putting in the spot here so those arms can service and pick it up? Or if there was a car blocked and we have to roll it back, because we have to get to that next resident, right? To be able to service that next truck and get, and have everybody the chance, the opportunity to serve, is that cart might be in a different spot than where you left it. And that was probably because, you know, there was a car that was impeding it at the time or something that was impeding it from able to service where you're at.
Okay, thank you. And I have a comment for the lady who said it's going to take a couple people to take it out. Mine isn't going to be that full, because it's just me. And I think it's going to actually be easier for me just to tip it and roll it than to actually have to pick it up and use my back muscles, which I have back issues. So, and I guess I would say to her, if it bothers you, do the porch pickup.
Now, I think my husband and I sometimes both take the red container out. I'm eighty years old and he's a good kid.
I'm also eighty, yeah.
That stuff's heavy for us to even down.
I understand.
And, you know, if we drive, we just won't fill up that whole, you know, we're going to have to do it for two weeks, so it's going to fill up.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, that thing that big, it's going to take me forever to fill that thing up.
You have cans and stuff like this, you know, and that fills it up pretty quick, so.
That will be the once a week for your trash, right? The recycling will be the effort divided.
We could do the cans and stuff like that, right?
Well, not your pickup.
Well, I don't see.
That's our only questions, I think.
Okay. A question that I had, is there any limit on the large item? As far as weight, height, length? I mean, is it anything that you can drag to the curb or is it?
Oh, no.
Okay, that's.
So there's, I think, you know, as Tyson was talking to you guys about the twice a year unlimited, that would probably be, there would probably be no limit to that program. It's what you or the residents can take, right? And put it in the dumpster. But the, the once a month program, yes. We, you've got to give our essential workers the opportunity to be able to lift it in the back of the truck. So there is a weight limit and there is a mount, set out limit to be able to service everybody in that allotted period of time as well. So, I mean, those are, that's a lot of volume that you're, that the city's offering. That's great, that's a great program. It's you.
For the car or the recliner, would you, no problem?
Correct, but yeah, I'm just talking about if you, it's not unlimited every month from.
He was asking what the weight limit was for that one item or the height limit for that one item?
Sure.
Every month that you have, the one large item.
Again, to backs and workers, we try to limit it at a 35 to 40 pound weight limit. So we have that opportunity to lift it on the back. So you think of like a water heater that's got a whole bunch of sediment on the ground that you can't lift it up, then unfortunately, we're don't, you know, we've got to give our team members that opportunity to lift it on the back of their trucks, in the back of the trucks as well.
Yeah, I think we need to tell the people they need to wait until it's, until we have our questions answered. Because you have other people who want to get in right now.
Sure, sure.
I had a, I had a quick question here. So you're going to bill the residents of Bryan, right? Is that how this is going to work? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if they need another dumpster, say they're doing a remodel, right? They can just call that number on their bill and, you know, how much, how much is a, I can't remember how big yours is.
Oh, you're talking like, if you, if they're doing like a, like a whole garage cleanup or a spring cleanup and you need a roll off dumpster?
Yeah, just a small one.
Yeah, you, that would be like a normal cadence that it is today. You could call, you would call us and you could order that dumpster. The team would, you need a safe, you need to put it in the, for the truck to service. But I think that you could call other roll off companies as well for those type of programs.
Okay.
For those one item kind of garage cleanup type, spring cleanup type, you're cleaning it up like a, like a roll off dumpster, right? That's what you're going to do. 22 foot, eight foot long and.
Yeah, yeah. But they could call Republic.
Yes, sir.
Schedule that right through you guys and drop it off.
Add an additional one.
And, yeah, add additional, yeah, yeah. What about multi-family homes? Did you say something about?
I don't need a challenge.
Okay, yeah.
If, for some reason, that you can't fit all of your weekly trash in that container, you can request a second container at a reduced rate or?
Yeah, like if you needed, if, if big families, like families that have multiple kids and have a lot of things and the one trash cart is just not enough for your reoccurring weekly waste, you can contact us and we can order you a second trash cart. If that makes sense?
Yes, absolutely.
At a reduced rate, right? It's not.
Sure. Yes, yes, it's not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't match the monthly charge that you have for both the programs.
Okay.
As far, you mentioned the billing. Since that is all going to be handled through Republic, what kind of guarantee are we going to have that people are signed up for? Is there something that says you have to sign up for trash pickup or?
It will be in the ordinance that we are only allowing one service provider for residential. And the reason for that is truly to save our streets. If you let anyone, just bid out to anyone and you've got six different trash pickup trucks going through the city, they're all going on the same streets because, you know, house one might have Republic, house two might have someone else, house three, they're all going to run the same routes. So it is consistent with a lot of municipalities that they do bid this out for one contractor and one contractor only, and a lot of it is the wear and tear on the streets.
Can a resident opt out?
I.
Well, we want them all to participate.
Right.
For setting out the collection. We also need them to participate in paying us to, for the service that we provide since we're doing it individually.
Yeah. Can we wait for?
Yeah, we're just going to, we're going to let these two gentlemen speak and then I'll call you up.
I actually don't have any questions because Tyson answered them in the, in the slides that he presented. Someone had asked me about the brush pickup, that's still going to happen. Somebody asked me about recycling, but you answered that question with going with Wilson and CAC. Do you get that much extra recycling at the recycling center that it was, be an issue? Oh, do you? Okay, I didn't know, because I don't.
Which I think a lot of it comes from outside the city.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, but that's the only two things. Like I said, the people that asked me questions recovered right here and I just let them know when I got my packet on Thursday. So I'm good.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot of questions either because I've asked them in the, in the past and I've received a lot and asked those and you've answered them tonight in the PowerPoint. One thing that, that I'm not sure of is, it looks like the base bid is 2110 for the next two years and then after that, it's 2.5% or an alternate bid is 19. And then go, 3.5% that goes up to after five years, 2185. Currently, we are at 2550. When I want to know and I, you know me well enough, I'm not putting you on the spot, but is this an estimate kind of coming from you? Is this 2550 something that I just made up? Or is this something that is a cost estimate that you can kind of verify?
Right now, our actual rates are 2550 and then 21 per month for seniors.
That's good, because I, I just wanted to confirm that, that that is, 2550 is our actual.
2550 is what we're charging.
We currently charge.
And seniors is 2350.
Right, right, right.
Though they don't put it in the bid as a senior discount.
It's still less.
It's still less than what the seniors are paying today.
Right. The follow, the second question, and I don't have any after that, is the possible, it says possible $10 per month increase. I know that's an estimate, I get that. Is that a, kind of an estimate that you feel somewhat comfortable with, that the administration?
I mean, I do in the sense that we were already looking at a $2 increase with an additional one to follow next year. And Tyson is correct, we cannot continue to pay recycling what they would be paying now and get anyone. I mean, showing that by the job opening that's been there for two years. The other issue that we have that's been an issue that came out of the pandemic but escalated is the trustees. The trustees from CCNO came, two to four people every day and helped with picking up the recycling and also sorting it. So we've basically lost two to four employees that did not cost the city or the residents any money doing the work along our recycling department. So two things happened. When the pandemic happened, obviously CCNO did not want to mass spread, so they no longer allowed people from the jail to go outside of the jail. But the other issue is, the board at CCNO, they were looking at some financial issues. So they contracted, I believe, with the US Marshals Office. So who now is in CCNO? They're higher level offenders. The percentage of it used to be 30% higher level and 70% misdemeanor people that could do the workforce program has now switched. They don't feel that in anytime soon, they're going to have the ability to do that work release program based on the offenders that are currently in CCNO.
So your point, if I understand it, is that the labor issue is going to continue to worsen, not get better?
Correct.
Is that, yeah.
Yes, and currently, the street department cannot keep up with their street department jobs because they are spending a lot of time doing their garbage pickup jobs.
And that's what I think is important to convey. And that is the issue of, it's not just money. Though, from my perspective, it sounds like it's going to go up to a 3550, 3550 per resident versus after five years, it's going to be a 2185 with Republic. Knowing that there are differences, it's not all trash pickup once a month, I get that. But there are alternatives that, that subjugate that somewhat. And a deal with that in some fashion may not be acceptable to each and every person. But from a sustainability issue, it's, it's cost, but it's also labor shortage. It's also increased cost in fees and/or equipment. I mean, as you mentioned, last I knew, I think, please correct me if I'm wrong here, Republic trucks are pretty much one-person trucks? I mean, you have like a person that like picks the, and sometimes you have a second, it sounded like.
So the carts that are going to do the reoccurring service, the weekly service with the carts are a one man, one armed, one crew truck driver?
Right.
The trucks that will run the once a month.
Got it.
We will a lot of time.
Have another person.
For, for the back, for the, for the lift.
Which, which makes sense, but my, my point to this is, is that how many people do you have picking up the garbage now? Isn't it three or four, three or four?
Well, there's two guys every day on the packer, on the garbage truck, picking up the bags. But the all trash, it takes all 11 of us, 10 or 11 of us.
So you have two people, one driver and one doing the regular trash thing? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. So we have more labor involved.
Yes.
Currently, then he's going to have law involved and it sounds like to the tune of twice as much. Plus, we aren't going to have the subsidized labor that, let's just get to it. Free labor we used to have 20 years ago. Is that... Am I on the same page here?
Two years ago, but yeah.
Oh, thank you. Up to two years... Well, I remember from 20 years ago that...
Before COVID.
But the last couple of years, they've been out. So between the labor, the increased fees, and what we can do it for in balance, I think that's what needs to be communicated clearly. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna be acceptable to everyone, because I have had comments that, you know, the... It's good to have a large thing to put stuff in. In the same sense, some people have a garage, it's all ready, so they're gonna have to... It's okay to keep these outside. Is that a correct assumption? Your... Can you keep those outside?
So that will be on your city ordinances? Some HOAs and city ordinances do require that these to be not seen at the street, so that will be something that you guys would wanna discuss.
Okay.
Are the plastics heavy-duty enough that they can sit outside?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good to know.
Something that you guys would wanna discuss.
That's good to know, because that could become an issue with people that have one-car garages or have three cars and a two-car garage already, they may not have the room.
What we found, and trust me, this is the exact... What we found is if you have just three 30-gallon trash cans, bags, cans, and you sit those in a triangle, the square footage or the square inch that it takes up is less than one of those cars.
So what you're saying is, is volume of trash is volume of trash regardless of how big that particular piece is? Unless your volume is very, very small.
What they're saying is the footprint in your garage of one of these to three 30-gallon triangles, which is equivalent to the same size, is actually the less of a footprint that it takes.
Yeah. I think we're saying the same thing and I...
In different ways, yes.
Yes.
You're absolutely right.
Well, you don't need to say that, but thank you.
Okay.
Because I'm very rarely am I absolutely right.
He likes it. No, I'm just...
I heard it was being recorded.
I brought my wife here, so she would tell you, very rarely am I absolutely right. But that's very helpful for me to understand, to understand that piece, and I don't have any other questions.
I just have one more comment to make. It's not a question, it's just a comment. I have to agree with a lot of you people that are here this evening. I don't like change either. I like it the way it is. But we don't know how to keep doing that with things that are happening in the world right now, in our city right now. We don't have the manpower. We can't afford to pay them, and even if we could afford to pay them, it's like Tyson said, we can't get anybody to apply. We don't know what to do. If you can come up with a solution for us, please let us know and we'll be more than happy to think about it. So this is our only thing that we can come up with that we think might possibly work.
And I don't see the labor shortage changing. I mean, being an employer here, I mean, it's unbelievable to find someone that can pass a drug test, find someone that can pass a background check. I mean, I feel sorry for Tyson. He's struggling to find someone that's been, what, a year now?
Two.
Two years.
Over two.
Yeah, and it's just basically to be able to pass a drug test, background check, and agree to the wage you're gonna pay him. So, I mean, it's not an easy thing for Tyson to be able to do, and then he has to take care of the manpower that he's got to hope he doesn't lose them. And he's overworking them with, you know, the trash pickup. So I totally agree with... You're struggling right now and I totally, I feel sorry for you. I mean, well, I'm struggling too with my job trying to find people, but I know where you're at, so I get it.
And to be honest, on really bad all-trash pickups, Andy, our planning and zoning administrator has helped out with trash pickup too. So it's not just the street department that's been impacted.
Hundred percent right. And this has been an industry challenge for us for many, many years. The residential services, it used to be the service where everybody started off. The residential services of the ways of doing with rear-load trucks at every stop, if you think about it, every stop, you can maybe do 500 stops on a given route, and every time you have to stop the truck, you have to get out, get out your knees, ankles. Well, in five years, those men and women that are running those routes, that really get to know those routes, their backs and their arms and their ankles and their knees are shot, and then they say, heck with that, I'm gonna get on a commercial route where I can stay in my truck and I can just service dumpsters. By when the industry shifted to the automated... Now, granted, the truck is a lot more expensive, the automated truck. These carts are a lot more expensive to provide out to, you know, to start, to pick up your first pound, but what we found is by being able to go to a single crew route, we really get to know those routes, they get to stay on those routes, and now they provide that efficiencies in those programs where now we can run, you know, 800, 900 stops on a given route than the 500 because of how many starts and stops and how many times you have to get a truck. So the efficiencies, the cleanliness, the effectiveness that comes, that will be able to be brought to you guys and the residents of Bryan, Ohio, in the simple residential program.
Tyson, once again, if it's not a fair question, you can answer it later. Don't feel like you have to this moment. But do you have any examples of by not... Right now, you're taking anywhere from two to two and a half days a week to pick up trash. Are there any examples you could give where this would assist the street department doing more street department kinds of things, more specific than what I just gave, which is improvements to the street department? Is there anything that comes to mind that you think would be, that you guys could spend more time on? And I know some of it has to do with money as it relates to... You gotta have money to do paving, et cetera.
Right. One of the main things is the sewers. Our sanitary and storm sewers, we're mandated, mandated is the right word, required by the EPA to do so much work per year on our sanitary and storm sewer system, and we're struggling a lot to meet those requirements.
Okay, that's good.
Because the two guys that are on the sewer crew spend two days a week picking out trash.
Got it, that's helpful.
What about catch basins, you know, like, would you guys be able to do that more often?
Yeah, I mean, it's... It will help everything that we do.
These two need to leave, but there are still people from Republic here, just they have another municipality to go to?
Thank you, thank you.
And I have their cards if you have follow-up questions.
Yes, fine. I'm good.
The audience.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna move to hearing public concerns. We ask you to come into the podium, state your name, and you have five minutes. Sir?
My name's Jim Paul, I live out in Deerfield, Surville. And just a couple of questions. Unfortunately, the gentleman had to leave, but do we have to get two of these? I mean, one of each, or can we put cans, bottles, et cetera, with our weekly trash in just one of them?
Ashley's gonna come up.
Yeah.
I'm Ashley Efling. I am the territory executive for the Public Services. So the recycling containers, you can put all of your recyclables in there. We just ask that you rinse them off first and then they dry. But yes, you can combine all of them in that container.
Okay, so I really only need, in theory, one container?
Correct.
That's good, thank you.
Is Secretary asking if he can just put everything in a garbage tote, not... And recycling and trash into one, because he doesn't want two totes at his house, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay, no, I apologize.
So he would not recycle, only garbage?
Trash is only trash and then recycling is only recycling.
So I have to have two?
Correct, if you choose to recycle as well. If you choose to not recycle, yes, you can have one container, put everything in there, it just won't be recycling.
That's what I... Okay, fine, because that's kinda my option, because obviously I don't have a lot of room in my garage for two of those big hoppers, so I'm... It's kinda counterproductive because we're all told to recycle and now we're saying, eh, you know. But I'm gonna look at my wallet when I do it too, you know? I'm gonna do it with one container. So thank you for answering that. Couple of other, just quick questions, I probably won't need the whole five minutes, but just a couple of observations. Number one, of course, this, it's a minor inconvenience, but each property owner will have to write two checks a month now, one to the city for remaining services and one to Republic for this service. Which is a little extra bookkeeping and everything for everybody. The other thing, of course, is the, as we've mentioned many times, is the size of those units don't necessarily fit real well in the garage, and so if you leave them outside, the aesthetics of your neighborhood, you know, isn't the greatest. I wouldn't want one of those sitting out in front of my house or my garage all week long. I don't think my neighbors would either. So we're gonna find room in our garage somehow, but a lot of people won't, and I think that's gonna be, you know, present some problems and a lot of complaints and things, you know, in the weeks and months to come.
I have that right now with the red container. My neighbor leaves his out from Wednesday to Wednesday.
But that's a lot bigger than the red container.
Yeah, but it's still a red container sitting out there.
Yeah, but that's a lot, a lot bigger, so... Really, I guess that's the only comments, questions, and complaints that I have. So I'll yield the floor to someone else.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thanks, Jim.
And also, in your recycling question, I forgot Tyson had said that if you wanted to only do the trash container, you could take the recyclables to Wilton Cack and drop this off.
Only cardboard, right? Only cardboard recycling?
Right now, cardboard, newspaper, magazines, but he is working on plastics and everything.
But then I have a question for Republic. Is that a problem with you with the way the bids are if we do anything? Because I know when I spoke to you at a social occasion that was not work-related about Wilton Cack, you know, it wasn't too big of a deal because they already get your cardboard anyway, but I also noticed Craig's face when you said that, so I wanna make sure. Do you guys know, is it gonna be an issue with the bid for that to happen? No concerns?
I don't believe so. I would have to confirm that.
I think it was the first time Craig had heard it and he probably didn't know that Wilton Cack already...
I believe that was it. I don't know if he knew that he had that kind of an outfit.
Okay. So you guys can handle that question tomorrow morning, if you don't mind? Is that fair, Doug?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next person, please.
Sandra Kramer, I live at 313 South Cherry Street. Well, who knows what's it gonna cost a month to have these in our home, at our home, separate compared to what we pay now?
1904.
Every month, plus what we're already paying on there?
No, no, your $23 will be off of the books for the city. We're not gonna charge for garbage, so that will be off of your BMU bill.
Okay.
And then you will get a separate bill and it will likely be quarterly to Republic.
Okay.
Okay? So we're not trying to charge you, overcharge you for things that we're not doing anymore.
Okay.
What we were trying to do, and it was a discussion that we've had, quite frankly, since all of them have been on council, it's come up at some point, including as long as Rick has been on council, and the only question we've never been able to answer to council is, what would it cost to have someone do it? And the only way we could answer that question was to go out to bid because of the government laws that we have to fall under. So that's what preempted this conversation.
Okay.
But we certainly will not be charging you a refuse bill on your BMU bill if this happens.
Otherwise, then, our cardboard and stuff, they won't be picking that up anymore.
They will. You can put it in that top.
Put it in there with your cans.
Yes.
Just like you do now in your red container.
I always mention my cans is a part of it. I always have mine. I was asking, why you rinse the bottles out? I said, because I just do.
Well, and someone has to touch that, so it's courtesy, right? Which we appreciate.
Okay, well, that's... Do you have any idea how long that's gonna be before this is gonna happen?
If council... So tonight, it was, we wanted to make sure, and you know, Mr. Betts had asked that we get with the newspaper and there be a big article so that people were not shocked. So tonight, the only thing we'll ask of council is a few items that we need in order for our attorney to draft an ordinance.
Okay.
And then at the next council meeting on April 18th, council will either vote to reject or accept the bid.
Okay.
Now, if they accept the bid, it is, we will immediately get the addresses of our customers to Republic. They will automatically have the list of people that get the porch, outside porch or outside their garage pickup, so that will transfer over. And then we will all start working together to try to get this set up by July 1. They may need a little more time to get, you know, the route and the totes and things because of the way the supply chain is right now, but that's still our goal, is July 1.
Well, actually, I'd be willing to pay. I'm sure a few other people would be willing to pay a little bit more for our garbage and stuff to keep it the way it is.
And I guess my question is, would you be willing to pay...
Thirty-five to four, twice as much.
Forty-five to $40, or, I mean, that much more?
If it kept everything pretty much the way it's supposed to be. I mean, you know, when you get so mad, you get tired of change, like she said too. You don't like to have changes.
No, I can appreciate that, because I have a family of five, so we have a lot of garbage and we actually talked about that.
I've lived in this town for almost 50 years, the same house for 50 years.
The problem is, even if we charge you that, we don't know if we can get anybody to work. That's what...
You could hire some of those retirees.
Well, they could work for nothing.
I told somebody that. He stopped me when I was on my walk one day and he said, I don't want you to change. And I said, okay, you go out there and put your application in and we'll keep it the same.
I could, I mean, you're old, but I'd still bother and work.
It's really hard labor. We've asked a lot of our street department employees on their bodies over the years, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so before you move on, Mr. Kozinfleck, we do have some things and I'd like the city attorney to follow me closely in case there's something that's against the ordinance.
Okay.
One thing I need council to do is motion on whether to accept the base or the alternate. The alternate would be the 1904, and I have it up on the screen. The base would start at 2110. So I need someone from council to motion whether to take the base or the alternate bid so that she can draft the ordinance for that amount.
Well, if my math is correct, and once again, as everyone knows, please correct me, but it appears to me as though the alternate bid is the best for the citizens of Bryan, is it not? I mean, somebody stopped me and said, do the math, John. And I just thought, I did the math and it looks me like the alternate bid, so I guess if everyone's heads nodding, I will make that motion.
So after five years, it'll go back out with bid?
Well, we could mutually agree to a two-year extension and it would be a three and a half and a three and a half, and it still comes out better after seven years on the alternate than it would seven years on the base.
Okay, because as time goes on, eventually the alternate becomes more than the other.
Yeah, but it doesn't within that full seven years or five.
We're limiting it to seven years, then.
Nine years.
Yeah, it was nine years before the base caught up.
And after seven years, it's still the current rate?
Good, go ahead. I thought I did it up. So I will make that motion that we take the alternate bid.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim? Yes.
And I don't wanna belabor the idea, but on the ordinance too, you probably need to give the attorney some guidance as to your feelings on whether it's okay for people to put them, the bins, up at their residence, or if they have to put it inside a building or a fence, that's something that we would have to write in that ordinance. So there are some people that do not have garages in the cities, some of our older homes don't. So the question is, can they be like up against the house in the backyard? Can they be... Or do you want them in an enclosed area?
Could it be enclosed or behind, so it's not... You know what I mean?
Yeah, can we make it something like, not visible from the front?
Something like that.
Visible from the front?
And then what do you do, though? Like, because I always find this interesting with the engineering conversations, like I live on a corner lot, so I don't know which one's my front.
You don't have a rear yard.
Right, I don't have a rear yard. They don't consider... They consider all of my house on the front. house on the front. I can't put a fencer on the side.
Not from side or rear, whatever.
Yeah.
What did you say, Brian? I'm sorry.
Put it so you can't see it from the street.
Yep, side or rear.
Side or rear.
But it's, either way, on my house, if I put it...
Well, mine is two-carrie.
Right. You're going to see it.
It'd have to be on my patio.
It is what it is.
I just want you guys to have some conscious conversations about that, too, because I personally don't want to see them out at the street three days after their trash pickup.
Or on the front porch.
Twenty-four hours before, 24 hours after, to remove them from the curb. But the question is, do you want them enclosed, or do you want them just up at a house?
I don't think we can say enclosed, because a lot of people don't have a place to put them enclosed. I would say out of sight.
I mean, because you would have to do your carriage house, which is off from your house, and it may be less convenient than hidden somewhere else.
Yeah. It would be very difficult for me to put it in enclosed there.
Sure. In conclusion of that, Rhonda, do you have enough conversation to get over that hump in the ordinance?
How many, how many days before they have to have it removed from?
I personally think 24 hours before their pickup, 24 hours after is the only time they'll allow it at the curb.
The key's going to be that it has to be enforced.
Well, Mr. Wydell is excited to enforce that, I can tell you. Okay, before we move on, any other concerns from the public? Again, council won't actually vote on this ordinance until April 18. Mrs. Kramer, you can come up and, okay?
My name is Janne Paul, and I live in Deerfield. Is, is, I'm just a little confused. Okay, now, people who have their pickup right at their garage door because of health issues, the same people using the carts, can, can they just pull them outside of their garage?
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll be picked up there? So as we age and we can negotiate that?
You can get on that list.
Okay. Where do you go, where do you, where is this list?
Ashley, do you guys have something on your website that you can mail? Do you know?
We can send out information on that, on where you would need to go for that, yes.
And that's something, to be honest, if you, anyone listening, if you get into a pinch where you can't find it, you are always welcome to call the mayor's office. We will be able to get you in contact with someone or get that for you and mail it. Like, that will be something we can do over this time period of change and transition.
So as we age, we can just put our garage door, put it out front, they'll pick it up, and then we can just put it back as we age.
It may not even be age. It may, you may break a leg.
You may have knee, foot.
All sorts of stuff.
Yeah. I'm just a little confused about the, because I've never done the in porch, or whatever you want to call it.
Get ahold of Republic. They'll tell you how to do it. If you get frustrated because you can't get the information, call Tyson. Call Tyson after midnight.
Two a.m. is our favorite phone call.
Tyson loves those calls after midnight. We'll post his cell phone.
No, we will not. No, we will not.
I'll just take it to John.
There you go. You guys go see John.
Yeah, well, that's true. You can just walk down the lane.
Just one other thing, just so I'm perfectly clear about this. This will encompass the whole city, all the subdivisions. Nobody will have certain priorities over other subdivisions. Perfect. Thank you. We're all in the same boat.
Also, when you're discussing putting those in the garage, well, for us to have that in our garage, your garage is not attached to our house. I'd have to go down the step block, go in the garage, and I don't want to leave a bunch of them laying in my house and take it in like that. To me, I think it'd be best to keep them on the outside. We can put ours on, behind our, behind our house, by the garage.
That's perfect.
Than putting them in the garage. So it'd be a lot simpler for us.
Especially in the wintertime. You don't want to walk out in the ice, and I don't.
And back where, where our deck is, I could either put it upside the deck and just...
And the nice thing about these, the lid will snap shut, so the raccoons and the other, aren't going to be able to get in.
They're not going to get in like they do our bags, yeah.
Yeah. So we won't have, we'll still have our regular garbage bags, so we get every...
No. Those black garbage bags, you'll be using, like, if you have tall kitchen trash bags or Walmart bags for your bathroom trash, you can just throw those in there.
You don't have to have special ones anymore.
And that's another...
But that's a good point. Dude, can they, can they use the old ones until they're used up?
Sure. They aren't going to care if you have.
Okay, that's what I, you said no, Ashley?
We can just put...
We can just put whatever bag you want.
Okay.
We can just put them in there with their cans.
So do I.
Yeah, and, and the one thing, too, that I think, you know, Tyson and I were talking about on price increase, the trash bags themselves have more than doubled in cost because of the resin that is short on the market. So, yeah.
I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's why I brought it up, too, so our attorney could draft the ordinance and craft it, so that we had it right. Because the truth is, council, you will only be able to have one emergency reading on that, because we have to accept or reject it in 30 days.
Yeah, so that's fine.
One, one concern that I have is the non, the person that opts out doesn't pay their bill, that kind of thing.
Cliff?
That's, that's our answer.
That's unfortunately our answer, yeah.
Well, then you need to realize that there's going to have to be some criminal sanctions in it, because that's the only way we can enforce it.
Is there a way to craft that?
Well, it'll be like a minor misdemeanor or something of that nature.
You know, Republic, they have an answer to that, too, Rhonda, because they deal with this in other cities. There may be something they can...
I think I'll look into it regarding red land. Do you don't pay for garbage?
No, don't pay for garbage and then just pile it up in their homes or outside. Because in the city, to be honest with you, when they're non-payment, the clerk's office does not, when they shut off the utilities, they don't shut off the trash. It's just something we've had, it's too difficult to notify everybody in the morning now.
Our typical billing structure is, is they will probably bill quarterly, and then we have, I believe it's like a 47-day grace period to pay that invoice, and then you receive a letter of service interruption saying, "Hey, you haven't paid your bill." And then there's usually a fee attached to that, because you haven't paid your bill. And then, so they do try to contact them online to pay their bill, and then ultimately, I believe, after, I believe it's 80 days, then it's sent to collections. So that's our typical billing procedure for our customers. And then as far as paying the bills, they can do it online, they can set up the automatic payment, they can mail checks. We have several options for paying bills. But once you receive your service interruption letter, that's notifying you, you haven't paid your bill, so we're not going to pick your trash up. And that actually is a tip for most people. Like, people forget. So they're like, "Oh, that's my bill, my trash is..." So that's our standard procedure for billing.
Okay, sir. Say your name.
Yes, sir. Justin Hagman. I'm a Bryan resident. If we have a container, well, first, is there going to be a charge for these containers?
No.
And what if we already have a container that's similar to this, all right?
No. Got to use that.
You have to use that.
Because our trucks are designed for that.
Okay. I think that's it. Community services out of the question. I know trustees in jail is, but...
There's, there's nowhere to pull from, to be honest, even with our probation, that they usually have been working in a building.
Okay.
Also, thanks for your help today. I got your message. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh.
I get hit all the time.
It's all right.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we will move to item number four, which is the clerk's treasury report.
Counsel has been presented with the clerk's treasury report for the month ending February 28, 2022.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution. Laurie, please, number read.
Resolution number 19, 2022. Resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2022.
Well, since he's out in the hall, um, council, this is an annual resolution we ask you to pass, so that we can submit the paperwork to participate in ODOT road up salts contracts.
If we don't vote for this, does that mean we don't have any snow next year?
I wish.
I don't think there's a connection, but we could try.
She wanted to know if we don't vote for salt, if we then don't get snow. And I said, "I wish."
We can try it.
But then if we do get snow...
We don't have any snow, so we have plenty of salt. I don't worry as much next year because we have...
Carryover.
I need you to get me a number tomorrow or Wednesday, too, so I can, well, maybe email it to me, because I'm not going to remember in the morning. Thank you.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution. Laurie, please, number read.
Resolution number 20, 2022. A resolution to accept a $50,000 grant from the Bryan Area Foundation to the Parks and Recreation Department for Fountain City Amphitheater Sign-In Lighting.
Okay, council, we are very excited to announce that the Bryan Area Foundation has granted Parks and Rec Department $50,000, and this will go towards lighting in the trees at the amphitheater, as well as a lighted sign out front on Center Street. So we are always grateful for the foundation. Once again, they actually came to us with an idea of the marquee signage out on Center Street. But for them to have the idea and then also offer to provide the grant, and then also do some ambient lighting in the trees at the amphitheater, we just are very grateful. The Parks Department is very excited to accept this $50,000 win.
I like, I like the sign on Center Street. I'm just, now, I, you peak my curiosity, like, where? Like, where that garden thing is where you turn in?
The intent is to put it in that Garden Island, and it will be similar to the school, where it's going to have upcoming announcements of the Fountain City Amphitheater events.
No, I, I think that would be a perfect place, thank you.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven is an ordinance. Laurie, please, number read.
Ordinance number 19, 2022. An ordinance providing for the apportionment of interest, or, excuse me, of investment income for the city of Bryan and repealing ordinance number 12, 2021, and declaring an emergency. This is just an updated list of all of our funds that we appropriate interest to each one.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution. Laurie, please, number read.
Resolution number 21, 2022. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending April 30, 2022. This is a transfer from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund for general spending purposes of $400,000. A transfer of $1.2 million from the half percent income tax fund to the capital fund for projects ongoing, which you will see this fit transferred out later. A transfer from the 401 capital fund for $82,525 to the 411 Horton Heights Sewer Project Fund, as previously discussed, and a transfer of $42,340.90 from the half percent income tax fund to the 506 wastewater treatment fund. This is the final payment that we'll be making on the sanitary sewer overflow project, so that loan will be taken care of through a WDA with this payment. Total amount of transfers requested, $1,724,865.90.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Number 12 is an ordinance. Laurie, please, number read.
Ordinance number 22, 2022. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the general fund Parks and Recreation Department of $17,900 for donations received for amphitheater expenses. It's also a request for appropriation of the $50,000 received from the Bryan era grant for the signed video display board. In addition, there will be an appropriation requested for $2,182,525 for the Horton Heights Sewer Project, as previously mentioned. Total amount of appropriation requested, requested, total, $250,425.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number 10 is an ordinance. Laurie, please, number read.
Ordinance number 21, 2022. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending April 30, 2022. This is a transfer from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund for general spending purposes of $400,000. A transfer of $1.2 million from the half percent income tax fund to the capital fund for projects ongoing, which you will see this fit transferred out later. A transfer from the 401 capital fund for $82,525 to the 411 Horton Heights Sewer Project Fund, as previously discussed, and a transfer of $42,340.90 from the half percent income tax fund to the 506 wastewater treatment fund. This is the final payment that we'll be making on the sanitary sewer overflow project, so that loan will be taken care of through a WDA with this payment. Total amount of transfers requested, $1,724,865.90.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number eleven is a resolution. Lawyers, please number read.
Resolution number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. A resolution providing for inter-fund cash advances. This is a cash advance from the four oh one capital improvement fund to the four eleven Fortney Heights Project Fund for two point one million dollars. This money will be returned into the four oh one capital improvement fund when it's reimbursed from the department developing our grant.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick? Jim?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Number twelve is an ordinance. Lawyers, please number read.
Ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the general fund Parks and Recreation Department of seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars for donations received for amphitheater expenses. It's also a request for appropriation of the fifty thousand dollars received from the Bryan Area Foundation for the signed video display board. In addition, there will be an appropriation requested for two million one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Fortney Heights Sewer Project, as previously mentioned. Total amount of appropriation requested, two million two hundred fifty thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, item number thirteen is an ordinance. Lawyers, please number read.
Ordinance number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance establishing the salary schedule for the Bryan Volunteer Fire Department and repealing ordinance number seventy, two thousand six, passed October sixteenth, two thousand six.
Hi, what you have before you is an ordinance. We've been looking at this for a number of years, and as it says, two thousand six is the last time we have touched the wages for paid-on-call volunteers. We'd like to get those up to date, and that's what's in this ordinance.
We'd like to add, we did have a wage committee meeting on this with Mr. Hoby and Mr. Betts.
And we more than concur, I believe.
Absolutely.
So, I don't really want to make the real first motion.
Well, I will.
Okay. Seems self-serving.
I'll second it when she gets done.
Do you need me to say it? Okay, I, I move to accept.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number fourteen is a motion to approve.
Yes, again, we had this conversation last week. The BMU YouTube TV station cannot record the meetings that are after a holiday at five thirty because the BPA meetings are at five PM, so there was some discussion as to whether there would be a motion and accept those dates to be at a different time, whether that be seven PM or not, so you guys can then discuss. I just was asked again to put it on the agenda.
I would really like to keep them at five thirty. My day starts at five AM. I know the department heads are up early, too. It's just a long day, and I'd really like to keep them at five thirty.
I'm just concerned we're going to get confused on what night we're supposed to be, what time.
And that, too.
I just think we need to be consistent.
I would like to leave them as, as they are currently.
At the five thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, the only thing that, this came from me because there were a couple of folks, not tons, just a couple, that could not, wanted to be a part of both, but couldn't. And you say, "Well, they can go." In these particular instances, their situation is they cannot. That's about as far as I want to go with that.
Cannot come, you mean?
Yes, there's medical issues involved. So, it becomes one of trying to find another way for, for them to do that. That's the only thing that really prompted it.
Are they on YouTube?
Well, these aren't. If, on the holidays, Chris Bryce cannot film two at the same time.
I understand that, but didn't we used to be on YouTube?
Not if he can't film it.
We are on these meetings, but when it's a holiday, BPA meetings will be the one that's filmed because he's already at that facility, so the council meeting that starts a half hour later is not filmed, just on the holidays. So, I think we talked, it was six, seven dates usually a year, so I just put the dates that were left this year, which was Juneteenth, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and then Ready, Set, Relax.
Is, is it possi, and we don't have to. I'm, I'm fine with keeping them. I'm fine with keeping them as they are. I want to present for some of those who have presented, they cannot attend, for reasons that I agree with, that they can still be, could still be a part of, and in this particular case, it would be, what, six or, whatever it is, five, one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah.
Five, that, that they couldn't be a part of, and I'm sure they could, could live with that, so I don't, I'm not pushing that. But is it possible, since many, and maybe Tom can verify that or not, many of those meetings are over with by six, would it be, would it be a bad thing at six? Doesn't deal with the confusion issue, which I understand, but it does deal a little bit with the time. Is that a possibility or no?
For me, I, I just want to leave it at five thirty. That's my own opinion.
Okay. Well, that's what we're discussing.
I have enough trouble keeping track of where I'm supposed to be and when I'm supposed to be there.
And sometimes our, sometimes our meetings are not short. I mean, they're, they're lengthy, and when they're lengthy, it makes for a very long day. And I'm sure some department heads will probably agree, and I'm, I'm a thing.
You always tell them you tried.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and I, once again, not divulging the situations, but I certainly understand. What I like, is just like today, I really like people coming to the meet. To me, that shows that there's interest, and, and I don't care what the issue is. When, when I've come in a couple of times, Cliff has said, "You know, you've got a full house." My response, ask him. Ask him my response. Great. And he looks at me like I'm nuts, but to me, it's great. I have no problem. If I can't defend or discuss my position, then I shouldn't be here. That's my thought. So, I'm, I'm fine. We can leave them as is, because it's like five of them, and, and, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll go from there, and, and that person, you know, it's actually two, those people just have to adapt in some other, in some other manner. It's unfortunate that they can't watch it, because they do like to keep up. And one of the two, not the other person so much, but one of the two, does call me a couple times, two or three times a year, and follow up from what they saw on BMU, so that's kind of, so, yes, I appreciate the thoughts and for council to entertain that and understand the consistency issue, so I'm good with that.
Maybe those meetings, you can put your phone on, and you could record it.
Okay.
But then you're creating a public record that you're going to have to keep forever. No.
Can I get a motion on this?
Well, you don't actually, if it doesn't change, there's no motion, because you passed by ordinance that they be at five thirty.
Perfect. Any further discussion? We're good?
We're good.
Okay, item number fifteen is liquor permit.
Council, this is the annual letter we get from the Department of Commerce to control. Every year, the city council has the ability to object to any of the liquor permits that are within the city. I'm really just asking for a motion that we don't...
My only question each year is the same, because I don't know, and each year it should be asked, I think. Do we have any objectionable liquor permit holders?
Not to your knowledge, chief? Not to my knowledge either.
Okay, then I'm fine, because it, it may not be that way every year.
I move that we do not need to have a hearing for the liquor permit.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, item number sixteen is liquor permit.
Two building permits, if you want to act on them together, that's fine. Dablin Corporation is doing a twelve thousand square foot building. They've already started construction on it. They don't need a building permit until they're complete with construction and occupy, but they're doing a six hundred thousand dollar investment. And then Spangler Candy Company is doing an interior remodel and renovation on the westernmost building there, sixty-nine thousand square feet. Now, there's a typo on this. When you see this, it says it's a two billion dollar construction cost.
I was hoping.
But it's two million.
That's good, though.
Because the permit fee would have been a little crazy, had it been two billion, but that's okay. Either way, that is a typographical error, but great improvements to the city. We're happy that we made the improvements, and I would request you approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
All right, thanks, and I'll hand this over.
Item number seventeen is permission to post. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm requesting permission to give a civil service test for the position of a full-time police fire dispatcher for the city of Bryan. The civil service exam for the police fire dispatcher concluded October fifteenth of last year and has exhausted all the qualified applicants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is permission to post. I'm requesting permission to give the civil service test through the National Testing Network for the position of police officer for the city of Bryan Police Department. Last civil service exam for the police officer concluded on December third of last year through NTN, and that certified list has been exhausted of qualified applicants.
So, move.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Item number nineteen is a appointment.
Yes, council, Chief Bruce Seiders had finished up a term for a resident that was serving on the health board and moved, and he asked that he not be appointed. John Drennan has expressed some interest in that, and I'm asking that you appoint him to a five-year term that would actually end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And item number twenty is a Tree City and Arbor Day Foundation.
I'm going to take that one as well. I think it's no shock to say that we were all very worried about filling Court Gosha's shoes, but we are very happy to have April doing that. She's stepped in and not missed a beat and has done a fabulous job, and I'm happy to report that the city of Bryan Parks Department has now received the Tree City Award for the thirty-fourth year in a row, and also the award for the twenty-second year in a row, and that's special thanks to Court April, our Parks Department, our Parks Director and Assistant Director, the Tree Commission, and our park board. So, I'd like to congratulate them on their awards.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, that's all we have. Let's go around the room real quick, and Lori, is there anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Brian?
No, sir, thank you.
Chief? Chief? Tyson? Tom? Wes? Rhonda? Okay, let's start with Mary.
Okay. Just throwing it out there.
It's what it sounded like. Yeah.
I would like to thank the Bryan, Bryan Area Foundation for the fifty thousand dollar grant. We really do appreciate that. I also would like to thank Tyson and Republic for all the trash information. I know Tyson put a lot of work into that, and we really appreciate that. Other than that, it's been a long night. Thank you.
That's what I thought I read into that. Yeah, I, I want, I wanted to thank all the citizens for their input on the trash that they've given me individually and tonight. I do appreciate their thoughts. It's not baloney. I really do. That's how we all improve and get better. However, the current trash pickup is not sustainable without considerable cost expense to the citizens of Bryan, some of which may be interested and willing to pay initially, but I don't think that's sustainable either. So, due to the decrease in labor shortages and, or increase in labor shortages and the increase in fees, and the assistance I think we're going to get for improving our street through the sanitary sewers and catch basins, et cetera, it's a really good move. So, thank you for, for Tyson and the mayor and all the staff that looked into that with Republic. I think it's a wise move and totally support it. Also, to our, I wanted to thank a couple of people here, to the BAF for their fifty thousand dollar grant for sign and lighting, to our firefighters, all of them. We certainly recognize tonight the volunteer, but all of them do an outstanding job, and, and we appreciate all that they do do. Thanks, Spanglers, for continuing, actually, Spanglers and Dablin for continuing to invest in Bryan at a high rate, and to John Drennan for his willingness to serve on the health board, and I think that's a healthy move. And congrats to BMU. I think it was in the paper, but I want to also congratulate the municipality utility company on receiving again a prestigious diamond designation, which comes from the American Public Power Association for the second time, and it's basically an indication of good business practice and safety practices, among other things. But it's a big deal. I know it's like a hundred and thirty-some, a hundred and thirty-eight, a hundred and forty, I can't remember what I read, across the nation to get it. So, this isn't just something that gets doled out. It's a big deal and needs to be recognized as such, so, that's it.
Hey, John. Judy?
Basically, just, I think he was looking at my notes. To Mr. Drennan for the serving on the health board. Thank you to Bryan for buying all the grants. You saved this city an awful lot of money. Thank you, Tyson, for your presentation. I know you put a lot of work into that, and I hope this helps ease those headaches and that stress that you're under right now. I'm so glad to see the building permits in Bryan. I want to say congratulations also to the Tree Commission for their award, and the girls' softball field out by the parks. If you haven't been out past there, you need to go see. They really look sharp. And also, thank you to the Bryan Area Foundation for the lighting. I want you to stop and think how much we appreciate the donations that we get, not just from the Bryan Area Foundation, but all the different organizations that give to this city, and how much we all appreciate them. They are so much enjoyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Going down basically the same path as everyone else. Thank you, Tyson, for a great presentation. I want to thank everybody that showed up tonight that expressed their interest in the garbage pickup and, and wanted to at least express their views, and I encourage anybody, I, I don't like that we have to vote next time, and so if anybody has a thought, one way or another, whether they're for the garbage or against the garbage, please make sure that you let us know or come to the next meeting so that we understand what the community is looking for, and, you know, are they willing to spend forty dollars a month, or is this a good, a good option? I want to thank Bryan Area Foundation. It's just unbelievable the number of things that they do for the community, and, and as Judy mentioned, we have a lot of organizations that, that do help the community, but it just seems like every time I turn around, there's another Bryan Area Foundation huge donation that is helping our city, and I, I want to make sure that I thank them for that. And the last is just kind of a public service announcement. I know people have been emailing me, and please do not think that I'm ignoring you. I am getting those emails. I'm still having some problems with my, with my computer, and I'm not able to respond. So, please do not think that those are falling on, I want to say deaf ears, but blind eyes, I guess, that I am getting those emails, but I am not able to respond, so I just want to make sure people understood.
Thanks, Rick. Mayor?
I got a quick question. Can we just set all of council's emails to automatically do what Mr. Betts does where it sends, do you need their iPads to do that? Okay, so what's going to happen is, over the course of the next week, but this is, this is something I'm going to have to just say on the record. So, we're going to have them from your wards or your at-large go straight to your personal or working, or whatever we have on file. Please do know you have an obligation, though, for records retention. Those are public records, whether they're on a city email or a personal, so you have to keep them. They are, they are something that are subject to request from anyone, so please keep that in mind, that you would have to keep those. I don't know if you want to set up a separate folder, or, you know, just please don't delete them. Fair? Does that work for everyone that way, at least? I know we've kind of talked about laptops, and I know some are uncomfortable and some are, but I think the iPad itself is not working with our server, and it's just causing too many issues, and there's too many things lost, and, and I don't want that for the public. I mean, the other day, someone said, "Well, you didn't call me back," and I, and literally, I called him back the day after they called me, but I was on vacation one of those days, and so I know how frustrated the public can be when they think you're ignoring them, and none of us want that, because we're all really good communicators, so we'll get that situated. Is that fair? Okay, thank you. Is that fair? Okay, thank you. That's it, then.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to thank all of everybody else's statements. Tyson, thank you. Great presentation. I want to thank everybody who came up and voiced their opinion as well. We do hear you, and we want to work with you. I want to thank the foundation. I thank Spanglers and Dablin, and congratulate the Tree City for their award. That's all I got. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.